Thank you for joining us. The Carroll City Council Meeting will begin at 5:15. Thank you for joining us. The Carroll City Council Meeting will begin at 5:15. Thank you for joining us. The Carroll City Council Meeting will begin at 5:15. Thank you for joining us. The Carroll City Council Meeting will begin at 5:15. Thank you for joining us. The Carroll City Council Meeting will begin at 5:15. Thank you for joining us. The Carroll City Council Thank you for joining us. The Carroll City Council Meeting will begin at 5:15.
All right, 5:16. Meeting will begin for the Carroll City Council. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, absent from tonight's meeting are Councilpersons Misty Base and Laverne Dirks and Mayor Eric Jensen. We'll move on to the consent agenda. That involves, includes the approval of minutes of the December 14th meeting, approval of bills and claims. There are no licenses and permits. There are appointments to committees, commissions, and boards. The appointment by the mayor with the council approval is Marty Steffes for Building Code Board of Appeals, Summer Parrot Library Board of Trustees, and appointment by council, Gregory Seaman to Airport Commission, Daniel Messrich, Planning and Zoning Commission, Pat Van Tiger, Planning and Zoning Commission, Eric Jensen, Carroll City County Communications Commission, and Mike Pogie Weaver, Carroll City and County Communications Commission. We'll also include the deadly and non-deadly force policy update. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We'll go on to a vote.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay, we'll have oral requests and communications from the audience. Is there anyone that has anything to speak about tonight that is not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, I would note that St. Anthony's planning to be here about 5:30. And so, I just told him we would continue on the agenda.
All right, we'll just come back to them when they let you know that they're on. We have no ordinance for this evening. And resolutions, the first resolution we have is 224 North Main Street Property Sale and Redevelopment, and Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are just considering a reaffirmation of the action the council did at the last meeting on December 24th. At that time, the council held a public hearing, took public feedback, and then closed the public hearing. Received a number of comments from the public on this action. And due to some technical difficulties with audio in reviewing this with the city attorney, I felt that it was prudent to tonight consider a reaffirmation of the action. So, the public hearing, they did believe that we did meet the threshold to have that and close it. But the audio did cut out prior to council taking action, so we're asked to do that. During the December 14th meeting, it was moved by Katz and signed by Seaman to approve Resolution 20-100, the sale of city interest in real estate located at 224 North Main Street to Roland Real Estate LLC for $1,000. And then on roll call, all were present except Base, who are all voted yes, except Base who voted no, and absence was Dirks in the motion to carry. With that, the staff is recommending that you do pass a resolution reaffirming the action of the December 14th meeting. With that, on behalf of answering questions, council has this evening.
And Mike, just, there's been some questions down in the public, just to reaffirm that it's approving the sale of the property, not necessarily the design of the structure at this point, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. One of the conditions of the sale was that the resolution or the design would have to be presented to the city manager, who would have to prove that prior to the issuance of the building permit. So, yes, that would come back for approval yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, if there's no further discussion, we'll move on and look for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the sale of said real estate to Roland Real Estate LLC for $1,000.
So moved. Second.
We'll go, we'll have a vote.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, next resolution is the Third Replat Ashwood Business Park Subdivision Final Platte and Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Being presented to you is a replat of the Ashwood Business Park. This is the Third Replat. This subdivision is located on the east side of Griffiths Road on the eastern part of the city of Carroll. The property itself was identified in the 2013 comprehensive plan as commercial, and the existing zoning on the property is I-2 General Industrial. This development consists of four commercial lots, all of them are at least 1.96 acres in size, which meets the minimum size requirements for the I-2 zoning district. There are no streets or utilities being proposed. If you recall, this entire area was actually platted previously as the Ashwood Business Park and all the utilities and road infrastructure were installed at that point. And then, as time went on, just for property tax purposes, they did place a number of the lots in outlots, and now they're replating these back into their original lots so that they can be developed. And that was, the outlots were purely done for property tax purposes. I would note that this plat and all the configuration that's being proposed tonight does meet our current zoning classification. It's been no change since this was originally platted, and for that reason, we are recommending that we waive the preliminary plat requirements since there's really, since preliminary plat really lays out utility and infrastructure needs for the area, and all of them are met with the current zoning or the current code that's in place. The Planning and Zoning Commission did meet on December 9th to review this. They did recommend that the city council approve the final plat, waive the requirement for preliminary plat, and then waived a number of platting irregularities. It had a number of conditions of approval. Those conditions of approval really related to some issues and errors in the plat that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. All of those have been corrected, and the plat being presented tonight do conform, and so those are no longer needed as conditions of approval. So, with that, staff is recommending that Carroll City Council approve the final plat for the Third Replat of the Ashwood Business Park Subdivision, city of Carroll, Carroll County, Iowa, and waive the requirement for preliminary plat and waive any platting irregularities there, too. With that, on behalf of answering questions, council has this evening.
All right, if there's no questions for Mike, we'll look for a motion to approve the final plat of Third Replat of Ashwood Business Park Subdivision, city of Carroll, Carroll County, Iowa, and waive the requirement for preliminary plat and waive any platting irregularities.
So moved. Second.
We'll go on to a vote.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
All right, the next resolution is the Updated Policy Number 0501 Purchasing Policy and New Policy Number 0501.1 Purchasing Policy, federally funded purchases and contracts. And Laura, and do you want to speak with C and D together on this, or they're related? Are they not? All right, then D is New Policy Number 109 Fraud Reporting Policy. So, we'll take those two together as one.
Sure. Yep. So, how this came about was that in August, we began the process to submit a grant reimbursement request to FEMA and the Iowa Homeland Security to be reimbursed for expenses that related to mitigating the spread of COVID-19 and for the health and safety of our employees and the public. Part of the review process was such that the Iowa Homeland Security, in conjunction with FEMA, looks at the city operations and our policies, and they were requesting that we update our purchasing policy to specifically address a number of requirements for if you were receiving federal monies and how to protect the spending of those federal monies. So, specifically, where the document is drafted to make sure that with the purchasing policy to conform to federal, state, and local laws. And since there were major changes that related to requirements for federally funded projects and a large amount of new wording, staff is recommending that we add the new policy of 0501.1 that specifically addresses just federally funded projects. So, if we have local purchases or just kind of our day-to-day operations, we'll refer to the policy 0501. But if we're receiving federal funding, then we need to make sure we're referring to the 0501.1. And since this was up for review or requested that we make these changes, staff took the opportunity to also review the policy in general and with it to clarify some wording and address some situations that we have encountered specifically relating to commodity purchases and repairs. So, there's some language in there to clarify more and give us a little bit more guidance on how we should be conducting those types of purchases. And finally, the staff would recommend a change to the council's approval and awarding limit to 25,000. With the change, it would have, or we would recommend purchases between 10,000 and 25,000 could be approved by the city manager with a report to the council. And then, any purchases under $10,000 could be made by departments if they were budgeted items. That's purchasing policy 0501, and then a new 0501.1. The other agenda item is a new policy 0109 for fraud reporting. This also came about because of this review by Iowa Homeland Security. Basically, what this policy is stating that if anybody within the city organization, it could be an employee, elected official, a council member, or excuse me, a board member or volunteer or staff learns of any type of violation relating to fraud, bribery, gratuity that would affect the federal grant, that we are required then to report it to the city manager, and then the city manager would then report the violation to the relevant federal agency or pass-through agency. So, these two policies came about because of the grant reimbursement that the city had submitted. I'd happen to answer questions, otherwise I would recommend approving the two separate, there's two separate resolutions for these.
I apologize, I probably shouldn't have had you do both at the same time. I do have one question on the fraud policy that we're doing. Do we have employees of the city sign off that they've reviewed this policy, and is that on record? What do we, is there a policy that's reviewed by, let's say, Chief Burke when he becomes employed here? Do they review that, sign something so that we have on record that they've been aware?
Yes, for a number of policies, we do have that. This one, we can add to that list as well, yes. That's a good point.
I think it's probably important if it ever came to, to
Sure. And we can also send it out and make sure we get a copy to all employees as well and have them sign something we can put in their file. So, they're aware of it, that's a good point, yes.
Okay.
In regard to the purchasing policy, Laura, just to clarify, that's department heads doing purchasing, correct?
Pardon me?
That's department heads doing purchasing? It said the department.
Oh, department heads, yes. Yeah, yeah, they would be in charge of their areas, and if it's a budgeted item under $10,000, they could have made that approval. If it's between 10,000 and 25,000, they would do the research and then work with the city manager for the approval. And then 25,000 and above, it'd come to council for their approval.
Very good, thank you.
And I would note, I mean, department heads give their staff certain level of discretion on, you know, also making purchases, so even, and not every purchase per se is approved by the department head. I mean, we do have staff that go out routinely as part of the course of their job and make purchases for their needs.
You're talking like day-to-day small operations.
Yeah, and that makes total sense, Mike, and I appreciate you calling that out, but for these larger items, it's just being sure the department head is the one who's responsible.
Yep.
Thank you.
I guess it's pretty, it's important then to make sure that we emphasize that this is budgeted items only, as things that are already in the budget, it's nothing new, it's nothing that wouldn't
Depending on what it is. So, for example, if you go read the repair section of the policy, you know, if we have an item that breaks down and it's part of our, for example, our water system or wastewater system, there is language that, yes, we can purchase even an on-budget item up to $50,000. Reality is, we have a mechanical breakdown in those departments, we have to get it fixed. And we just can't wait, go through a budget process. So, there is some allowances even for on-budget items, but generally, you're correct, this is, would apply to only budgeted items. There's always those exceptions to the rules.
We don't want those either.
We don't.
Any other discussion on this? All right, if there isn't any, I'd look for a motion to update Policy Number 0501 Purchasing Policy and New Policy Number 050.1.1 Purchasing Policy, federally funded purchases and contracts.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll move on to a vote.
Katz?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
We'll also look for a motion to approve New Policy Number 0109 Fraud Reporting Policy.
So moved. Second.
We'll go on to vote.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
All right, that's all the resolutions we have. We move on to reports now. And report, first report is Street Resurfacing 2020 HMA Resurfacing with Milling, Change Order Number Three, and Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During construction of the street resurfacing project, some of the items of work exceeded the original contract estimated items. And within the contract, the unit price contract, the contractor is paid for each unit of work that he completes. In contracts funded by the Department of Transportation, it's a requirement to adjust the final quantities in the contract to the actual quantities that were constructed at the end of the project. Change Order Number Three has been prepared to do just that. It does adjust 37 of the bid items to the quantities that were constructed, that those bid items define. And that's for both the locally funded grant road portion of the project and for the federally or state-funded West Street portion of the project. The net change of Change Order Number Three is $117,886.28. That brings the total construction cost of the project to $1,092,325.45. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of approval of the Change Order Number Three to the Street Resurfacing 2020 contract in the amount of $117,886.28.
Any questions or anything on that for Randy? All right, then we'll look for a motion to approve Change Order Number Three to the Street Resurfacing 2020 contract in the amount of $117,886.28.
So moved. Second.
We'll go vote.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, we'll move on to Street Resurfacing 2020 HMA Resurfacing with Milling, Statement of Completion and Final Acceptance of Work. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ten Point Construction Company has completed the Street Resurfacing 2020 project. It did begin July 22nd of 2020 and was completed November 19th of 2020. 58 of the 62 working days allotted in the contract were utilized in the performance of the project. So, the contractor did finish the project within the time allotted. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of approval and acceptance of the Statement of Completion for the Street Resurfacing 2020 project.
Discussion at all? All right, we'll look for a motion to approve and accept the Statement of Completion and Final Acceptance of Work for the Street Resurfacing 2020 project.
So moved.
Second.
We'll take vote.
Katz?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, and that we, I guess we're back to oral requests, and we do have St. Anthony now, St. Anthony Hospital, an update on COVID-19. Are they available?
Yes, we are.
Okay. And this is Ed Smith here talking to us, is that correct?
It is Ed Smith, and I'm joined by Dr. Kyle Uvelin as well. And I thought I'd start us off with just an update. Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim Fleischer. I appreciate the city council taking time to receive an update from St. Anthony and our medical staff. Just real quickly to talk about where we're at as a community with active cases, we're today at 358 active cases. Our positivity rate is officially the 17.4%, and I'm really happy to report that over the last seven days, it's closer to 13%. And I just would like to take the opportunity to thank the community and you all for helping us get this message out, that our mitigation efforts are really working with individuals masking, washing their hands, and practicing social distancing. If you recall, before Thanksgiving, we were in a crisis level with the positivity rate being over 26% and close to 700 active cases. So we've, we've done a really good job of knocking that down. And as we move into the Christmas and New Year's holidays, it's real important for us to continue our mitigation efforts as we enjoy our families and enjoy, enjoy those holidays as well. I will say, Dr. Uvillain is going to give us an update as to where we're at with the vaccines, we're all excited about that. And with that, I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Uvillain. We'll both be available for questions after, after this presentation.
Thanks, and thanks to the city council. The active cases, when we last appeared in front of the council to give an update, were in the 500s, and we peaked in between 700 and 730. That was right in that week that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors and then Governor Reynolds instituted the enhanced mitigation measures. Roughly a week after the mitigation measures were initially enacted, we started seeing a trend line down. It's not perfect, it's more like a stock market graph where there is ups and downs, but in general trending down to what Ed just responded with our current rate in the 350s. When we last appeared in front of the council, we had discussed how we had created a COVID unit and then had to expand it twice because of the inpatient influx of COVID-19 positive community members. We had to actually expand our COVID unit again a third time after that last presentation of the city council. As the positive case count in our community went down, so did our inpatient census and that follows. We have more than enough capacity right now to continue doing our normal operations. That was very close, the last time we appeared in front of the council, to be able to maintain our normal operations, continue doing elective procedures, at the same time taking care of the COVID-19 inpatients. We've been able to do that throughout this entire time period. The differences in treatment have also impacted the inpatient census and our number of positive cases. Since we last appeared in front of the council, we've had two outpatient therapies. Both of them are monoclonal antibody treatments that have become available to us and that we've used frequently at St. Anthony. The majority of the patients who have received this have been long-term care facility residents, so nursing home assisted living residents. We all know, one of the things we know with pretty well certainty throughout this year is the senior citizens who live in congregate settings are the most at risk for significantly bad outcomes. We've really been able to help out by doing those outpatient treatments, and I credit not just the facilities, but the medical staff that are taking care of those patients for working on this hard. Vaccines, so two weeks ago, the Pfizer vaccine was approved, last week, the Moderna vaccine was approved. For Carroll County, the Department of Public Health has notified us that the Pfizer vaccine will be directed purely for long-term care resident and staff, which starts out with nursing home resident and staff. For the healthcare workers that are not in nursing homes, so these are hospital and clinic frontline healthcare workers, the Moderna vaccine will be directed for them. We expect to receive the Moderna vaccine in Carroll County tomorrow and start our vaccinations tomorrow. I cannot applaud more that as soon as we opened up signups for healthcare workers, you could refresh every two minutes on the signup sheet, and it absolutely just blossomed. So we've filled up over a day and a half of doing 80 to 100 vaccinations a day of healthcare workers, and we're going to keep going on until our entire tier 1A, which is the closest, highest-risk frontline healthcare workers are exhausted, then we'll move on to all other healthcare workers. And as soon as the healthcare population has been completed, we've, as we were planning all along, the CDC directed us all along, but the FDA confirmed it over the weekend, it'll be the high-risk public, very senior citizens, the public with high-risk features for worsening. We expect in Carroll County, the Pfizer vaccine to be available for the nursing homes initially and the nursing home staff next week. So December 28th would be the earliest date we would likely start the nursing home vaccines in Carroll County. We just got off of a teleconference with all the medical staff, going through a lot of the specifics through both of the FDA emergency use authorizations. We should expect to have some mild sore arms after the immunization, but I'll repeat 100 times that the incidence of severe arm pain, things like that, were less than 1% to 1%. While there was a lot of injection site pain, it was of the mild category. I am thrilled to hopefully get my injection tomorrow, along with a lot of the doctors and nurses, and the sooner we get all of us, at least 60 to 70% of us through, the sooner that our region starts looking a lot more normal again. But I'd open it up to any questions for either Ed or myself, I'll pass the computer back to Ed.
And just a comment on Phase One is healthcare workers and long-term care residents. Phase Two, which should begin the latter part of January, are the essential workers, we're bringing back that terminology, and individuals 75 years and greater, and then it will open up to the broader public after that, most likely the end of February and March. So we're at the beginning parts of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel regarding this pandemic. So, any questions?
Firstly, before, I have a couple of questions, but Dr. Uvillain, I want to, I want to applaud you for how well you've done with the public. This isn't the first time I've heard you talk on this. And Ed, you know how well he's done as well. The presentations you've made at KCIM on the radio and, and through other media have been just outstanding, and I appreciate that, and the whole community I'm sure does as well.
That's very nice, Mayor Pro Tem, I appreciate it, but it's a complete, this is so many people working on this, I just happen to have a microphone put in front of me at times, but it's, it's a huge team effort amongst doctors, nurses, lab technicians, custodial workers, it really is.
Oh, I, I can speak firsthand for that because I was in your hospital with it, and I, I told Mr. Smith at one time when I ran across him that the hospital did an outstanding job, I thought, with my care and others that were there at the same time. I do have some questions now. The first thing I was, are we looking for plasma donations in this area yet? And where do people go to donate? I wonder, are they supposed to be contacted by someone, or is that an important?
The streamlined way, the, the local blood bank that serves our region is LifeServe out of Des Moines. So honestly, just Googling LifeServe, it'll bring you to their front banner, and on the front banner, there's a huge button that says if you've recovered from COVID-19 and are interested in donating, click.
Okay, thank you. And one other one I have before anybody else does, I guess I'll get mine out of the way. How about, can you comment anything about the concerns anyone would have if they're already infected and they get the vaccine? Is, is there a problem with that? Do you need to know for sure you're negative before you take the vaccine? Because that's a question I've heard in my setting that people are a little bit concerned about. In other words, they're getting vaccine, already had it, will that make them sicker?
It's a great question, and I'll, I'll take 20 seconds to answer it. So the only requirement regarding having COVID-19 and getting a vaccination is that you can't be actively infected, you can't be still sick in those first 10 days as an outpatient or be put in the hospital. But once you've recovered from COVID-19, you are absolutely eligible to get vaccinated. The amount of long-term immunity from a natural infection is not uniform, and that's the problem. And that's the difficulty with, why it keeps bouncing back in different cities, et cetera, why we've experienced patients who have had it more than once or been able to pass it to others longer than we thought they should have. So if there's a shortage in a certain region, like let's say Ed and I are partners, and there's only one vaccine for the two of us, if I got COVID-19 in the last month, I would let him get this one, and I would wait until there's a dose ready for me, just because hopefully I've got some natural immunity for at least those first couple months. But if somebody's had it, as long as they've recovered, they are eligible.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions for?
Gentlemen, this is Clay Haley, I just wanted to thank you for the updates and all the work you do continue, just echo Mayor Pro Tem's comments, thank you for all you do and your outreach to the community, we appreciate it.
All right, thanks very much for joining us again.
Hey, to all, Merry Christmas, and thank you for all you do and giving us a forum to be able to communicate to the public.
All right, very good, we appreciate it. Yep, bye. Okay, I trust everyone's read the committee reports that were provided tonight in the packet. Any comments this evening? I have one, and that is the same one that they have, and I want to wish the entire community a, a great Christmas holiday, as great as we can have it. Just enjoy your families, and that's why we moved this meeting a little bit early to help accommodate people to be with their families, the city workers, and boy, from me and everybody else, I, I just wish everyone a great holiday season. And any comments from anyone else on the council? And are there any comments tonight from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor and council, I did want to take an opportunity to update the council on the latest Carroll City-County Communication Center Board meeting that we had last Wednesday. As you know, Mayor Jensen and myself are the two appointed representatives on the board for that commission. Chief Burke also does sit in those. And I know we've had some discussions over the last few years about some of the funding equity from the state's perspective on that board. And I, I wanted to go through a few of the slides that were presented, just for the council's information. Certainly, I'm not going to go through this as elegantly as Jason Hoffman, who is the director of the Communication Center, but I do have up on the screen now, and hopefully they can be shown out to the broadcast community, a few of the slides here. So this first slide that we're looking at shows the call count that's happened over the last several years. Now, this is total calls, and Chief Burke could probably emphasize a little bit more, kind of go in a little bit more detail, but this is more than just 911 calls. And like I'll show here in a minute, in 2019, for example, this shows a total call count of 17,080, but the total number of 911 calls in here is 4,382 911 calls. So this call count also includes just simple call for services that are coming in or the non-emergency number, but it also includes officer-initiated calls. So calls saying, for example, I'm going on a foot patrol, would get logged in as a call. So this is not just necessarily even a call for service, it's just a call that's taken and logged within their system. So you can see the number of calls have went up over the last department go down this year. So we received last Tuesday kind of a packet of information, and in it, they did identify what they felt were what they called peer counties, and these were comparable counties that were both, the five counties larger than Carroll County and the five counties is the call volume, both enhanced 911 calls, wireless 911 calls, and then total 911 calls. O'Wine is the largest city in that county. The city of O'Wine operates their own call center, but also Fayette County operates their own 911 call center. So they're totally separate, they take different calls, one's just city, O'Wine, one's just Fayette County. So it's the only kind of real outlier out there. Otherwise, all the other nine are all, one is actually city-run. But this is kind of the geographical layout, this is, again, information that Jason Hoffman provided the board, and I'm just updating the council this evening on. Population, again, all these are very similar in size, not, not a lot of variance. And then you can see here is the 911 call volume for each of the counties that are involved. And if I remember right, Chief Burke, the plus sign means these are counties that have dispatching for ambulance service, if I recall correctly.
The, I believe the plus sign was the EMD, which is the Emergical Medical Dispatch, so they run through a protocol of question-taking based off of whatever the urgency is medically, that's called into the comm center.
So again, you can see, this is, this is wire LAN 911 calls. This is a table then that shows the total 911 call volume. And what this was really setting up for, and the commission's talked about it for a number of years, but really just staffing that is happening at, within the concerns that Carroll County. And there are calls that come in, and I do have to say, Jason and his entire team, they're, they're professionals in what they do. The public and the interaction, when there's an emergency situation, that they're handled very professionally, they did actually play two different audio calls of emergency situations, both of them were situations where the caller, if it was inexperience of not knowing how to do CPR, or just the shock of the moment of what to do next. But really, you could hear the professionalism of the dispatchers working with the caller to assess the situation and get them to start chest compressions. And to their credit, both of those calls were good outcome calls, and that's why they shared those in particular. We didn't have any names or any of that private data. But you really could hear the difference in one call where you had one dispatcher, and how they handled that call situation, and how that dispatcher interacted, but also then had to dispatch an ambulance and had to also do all the side work, where then the second call, you know, had two dispatchers on, and how they were able to kind of tag team and handle that together, where one dispatcher could focus on the caller and really work them through, the second dispatcher really could then work and dispatch. So certainly, there's no argument that they really have to look at making sure that they have two dispatchers. And what this really showed was the various call centers and how many full-time staff that they work, and because of the numbers, they struggle having those two dispatchers on at all times. And from their perspective, and I'm not going to argue it, it impacts how they can then work through that emergency situation. So, doing that, it really has, what they're looking to do, and then the discussion point was going into fiscal year 2022, which the commission was meeting to discuss and start working on. Employee, and this would be the first of at least two that they would be hoping to add over the next few years. And you can see then, so for the current, of course, technology never works the way we want it. So you can see in the 2020, 2021 budget year, the total expenditures was $518,000. And going the proposed budget, $181,000. So I mean, it's a substantial increase to add that additional worker. Now, there's also a full-time employee, but it, but it's a substantial cost. And I know the council, two years ago, had a lot of discussion during the budget season, and really, a lot of concern about how much comm center budget is really weighing on the taxpayer of the city of Carroll. And just to refresh the council, the, the comm center has been funded for a, for a very long time. 50% of it is paid for by the city of Carroll, and 50% of it's paid for by Carroll County. Now, within Carroll County's portion, obviously, the city of Carroll taxpayers are Now, within Carroll County's portion, obviously, the city of Carroll taxpayers are taxpayers of Carroll. That was based on property tax values, I believe, from 2020, 6%. So when you equate that in, say, this, the city resident pays 68.5% of the total property tax, or the total bill for the comm center. And so, you know, we're paying over two-thirds of the cost to operate the comm center. And I think it's really asked itself, is it equitable the way it's set up? I really have to thank Laura for doing some of the legwork on this. We went back and contacted the largest city in each of those comparable counties. And really, in a nutshell, what this shows is three of the comparable cities pay no additional costs other than their county property taxes. So it's a countywide levy that is used to support the comm center. Three of those counties, funding amount, once 3,180, once 10,28,000, next fiscal year is 38,000. And then three of them pay what I'd call a substantial contribution towards the comm center. And those range from 139,000, 170,000 to 204,000. Then you had O'Wine and the city of O'Wine and Fayette County. So they operate against, O'Wine, if you recall, second operate their own 911 in addition to Fayette County. So O'Wine pays $200,000 a year. And I would start with do their own 911 dispatching and said, really, quote, here, we cannot continue to fund with the general fund. And that's where we funded, that's the only levy we can use to fund really the comm center. We do take some of our toward liability and our employee benefits, and when we can allocate those costs back to the comm center, we can. But most of it is coming right out of our general fund. The city of Decorah this year actually switched from a city ran 911 that served the entire county to a 20AD that's ran out of the Emergency Management Fund, the entirety of the cost that they were looking at. Out of these peers, then you look at the city of Carroll, in this fiscal year, we're paying $234,000. And under the proposed budget right now, that would go up to $237,000. And again, that really comes out of our general fund. And like I made a comment to the comm center, and that cost would continue to rise, it is really to a point that is not manageable within our general fund levy, because we're limited, particular levies that don't have caps. And I think that's where you see these other counties, it's really a countywide levy. It's landed, I think the question is, where do we go? You know, I've been here for, this is the fifth comm center board meeting on budgets that I've worked on, and I can tell you even from my first comm center board, and how this was being allocated to the city, and I know that the council has done that too. And I know my predecessor has questioned it. So this is not a new scenario, but I think when you consider really a comm center that serves the entire county, and additionally, you have other communities, and they need the support of the comm center too. But historically, when this was started, it was really just the city and Carroll County. And over the years, you've seen where, for example, the city of Manning discontinued dispatching, they came on to the comm center for dispatching. The city of Manning doesn't contribute anything towards the comm center. So I think it's really come to a position of what is equitable? And from a financial standpoint, we can no longer, in my mind estimate, continue to support the level that we are. And so I've really pushed with the comm center, we really need to look at renegotiating where we go with this, because it's clearly there's models out here, and even your comparables, they're being funded differently, and we're really, have put a lot into what our peers are looking to be doing. I would also say I've never said that we should never not contribute, and certainly that's a policy decision I need to take, a direction I need to take cues from the city council on. But the, I, one funding method that I have thrown out there for a couple of years with the comm center board is looking at what is called the ISU Fire Services Funding Method. And, you know, I know years ago, there was really a lot of debate in the fire services on how we fund the fire departments, especially city fire departments that serve areas within the townships. And it really looks at three components. It looks at property values as one component, so that's where one-third of the formula comes from. Population, that's another third of the formula, and then calls for service, which is also a third of the formula. And then based on that, then a cost is allocated to all the jurisdictions, and that's what we use here at the city of Carroll. So we use the fire service formula for the township support that we provide fire services in. So there's a lot of different ways, and I'm not saying that this is it, because there's probably about 30 different ways we can look at it, and certainly, I think it takes a lot of negotiation and discussion with the county. But running the fire service model and assuming that the county continues to contribute 50%, and then what contributions would need to come from other cities in the county, we looked at these. And some of these numbers are a little dated, because again, we don't run the comm center, so I don't have current numbers. Taxable values are a little, they're a couple of years old, so they're not, they're not exact. But this should give the council really good, and even the public that's watching, a really good idea of what these work out to be. But if you just look at, and I'm going to use the city of Carroll, I'm going to highlight the line, so we're all kind of playing on the same line. And I don't know if Cat Six can show this, or maybe they're already showing it, I just, I'm not seeing if they are. But, you know, so our population was 10,103, represented 48% of the population, 37.06% of the total taxable value in Carroll County in FY 2020. And then the total calendar year 2017 were 11,628, or 70.57% of the total calls in Carroll County for fiscal year 2017. Now, I'm going to pause on calls for a second. I think there's a discussion item that would have to happen on calls, because again, has done dispatching in the past, how much time does that type of call take? It's like an emergency medical call.
Yeah, very limited, excuse me. Just entering the information is probably a 30-second at most time with dispatch needs compared to a traffic stop where you're monitoring the traffic, or a 911 call, or much, much longer for those types of calls.
You know, so I think there is a discussion item on calls, and I think we need to look at what other counties do, because I know some counties use calls volume in their matrix on how they allocate costs out to the various jurisdictions. But I think there's a discussion item there that happens, even down to, I believe, when our officers call, that they're on duty and off duty is technically a call. Is that really a call of service? I would kind of question that. That's the data we have, and that's how the calls are broke out in this case.
Okay. There are different types of calls for service. We're at 70.57. Has anybody ever broken, like done a pie chart or something to indicate the various types of calls per service? So we get a more accurate picture of when Brad said it takes 30 seconds, and how many of those, you know, are 30% of those, 70.5, 30-second entries?
They have those charts. I've seen them in the past. I don't have one.
I think that's really significant.
When we were at Fairview 24 hours a day, that was a foot patrol call, so every officer was creating that log. So it is skewed, it's, you know, that's downtown walking or walking through Walmart, it's a foot patrol call. We do a lot of that stuff.
That's just a part of what you do.
That's just a lot of our daily activity. Yes, yes. So there's a lot of those calls. I don't know the percentage. I wouldn't, you know, 30% may be high, but you're probably not terribly off track.
I mean, because that is a big part of your job.
Absolutely.
Day in, day out. One other question, I know there are special levies, but they have to be voted on, like a special 20, up to 27 cent library levy, for example. There are four, I don't know, probably, I saw four different counties that have a countywide levy. Are those voted on, or is that just an action by the supervisors?
You know, I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on county levies. I don't believe all those levies have to be voter approved, and there's different avenues on those levies. So I know, for example, the Decorah one, it's actually an emergency management levy. I don't believe that's a voter, but I'm not going to sit here and speculate.
Yeah, I just, I was curious, yeah.
Yeah. It's a very, very good question, at the end of the day. So.
Mike, and Brad, either one of you, I got a question on this too. So when we talk this, we're talking 911 calls, is kind of the category we say, but, for example, somebody calls the 792 number, calling the comm center to complain about a barking dog, that's a call that gets logged in here and counted in these numbers, correct?
That is correct, yep.
Okay. But that would not be a 911 call. So when, earlier, if you remember, in 2019, when we said there was 4,000 some 911 calls, that, those would be in addition to that.
Right. And that's kind of what I was wondering, when you see those numbers, some of that, what I call routine business, kind of what Karen was alluding to, where those were counted into, so.
And currently, our business line goes to the comm center. So if someone's calling for records, they're calling to set up a vehicle inspection, that's all filtered through the comm center first before it's transferred over to the police department. So and those calls aren't, are not logged as a call for service, but they are still going to the comm center.
So we'll continue on, and so once you take those three components, again, population, taxable value, and calls, they're each a third of it, you end up with what is your total allocation each? And in this case, it is 52.05 would go to the city of Carroll, or of the $547,000, the city of Carroll would then be kind of required, or contribution would be $284,896. So again, I think there's a lot of different ways you could say, how does that get paid for, you know, does the city pay that? Well, then every jurisdiction in the county would have their own component of that. Or do you first look at, okay, well, Carroll County, for example, is paying 50%, they continue to kick in kind of that 50% in. So when you look at the 50% of the 273,000 is their 50%, again, we would represent that 18.53%. That's what our taxpayers would be paying for through county property taxes, or 101,000. Now, you subtract that off, the 284,000, the city community contribution would be 183,47677. I'm not saying this is the way, this is just one way that you could look at it, different way. I think this is one formula, the ISU Fire Service Institute Funding Formula, that really has kind of been vetted for a number of decades, I think, in the fire service world, they really have come to accept it. We've used this, Laura, since you've been here, correct? So I mean, it's a longstanding model suggests, it's more about, it's more than just getting a call or call service, but it's also based on just having it available. You may never call 911 until you call 911. And that shouldn't be a free service, per se, until you just use it. So I think that's what the beauty of the fire service model is, it really does kind of give a fair, equitable, open, and it's just, again, one method. So the discussion, as your representative, and I'm certainly looking for feedback from council tonight, you know, we, I really did push that we need to really look at the funding mechanism. We discussed about it, and frankly, even suggested that the city maybe needs to consider withdrawing out of the 20AD, because it is really a difficult position we're in as this funding continues to go up. Because again, that A-10 levy is not growing. It's been A-10 forever, and it's the only levy we really can put towards the comm center budget from the city's perspective. And it's really becoming unmanageable for us as we move forward. And as these costs, as we add staff, balloons, like we're seeing in the proposed fiscal year, upcoming fiscal year, it's really problematic. So I guess I did suggest that we may need to terminate, withdraw out of the 20AD, and part of it is, how do we get a negotiation? I know two years ago, and I'm not trying to place blame on anyone, we really did say we needed to have negotiations, and everyone, as we were working through the budget, was yep, 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 we're going to do negotiations, and of course, we didn't. And so we're kind of now back at the table again, it's like, well, how do we, how do we really get us to sit down? And, you know, it is, it's definitely, withdrawing would be a big move, but it does get everyone at the table. And I've never suggested that the city shouldn't pay anything, but it's how do we get a fair, equitable distribution of costs? So I'm going to pause there, kind of look for some feedback from council on thoughts. I can go into what it would take to withdraw out of the 20AD if you'd like, and kind of go through those mechanics if you'd like. This is just a discussion item tonight, this, there was no actual action requested for this evening, but I figured we needed to start somewhere.
Mike, with the 20AD agreement, what are the time constraints that might be upon us?
It's a good question. Like a good contract wrote, first written back in the 70s and updated, I believe in the 80s, was not the clearest language in the 20AD. So the 20AD talks about that if one of the jurisdictions wants to withdraw out of the 20AD, they can do that. If they do it within the last six months of the year, doesn't define what a year is, that they have to pay 50% of what they would, their obligation would be in the future fiscal year, they'd have to pay 50% of that cost. So we, basically, if we withdraw in the last six months of the year, we'd have to pay 25% of the next year's cost. In another place, it does talk about that the commission shall operate on a fiscal year for budgeting, and that that fiscal year budget, unless otherwise outlined by law. So reviewing with David Brunner, City Attorney Brunner, he was of the opinion that the withdrawal would be based on the fiscal year calendar. So we'd have to withdraw before the end of the calendar year, by December 31st, or we'd be obligated to pay 50% of our normal cost in the following fiscal year. When we withdraw, it's immediate, we withdraw at that moment in time, and we would still be obligated to pay our costs through the end of the fiscal year, the way I'm reading that agreement. So if we want to take an action, we'd have, if we want to withdraw and quickly, we'd have to do it by the end of this calendar year, by the end of December.
So is it safe to say, if we withdrew, does that mean services terminate, and then we would then need to pick up how those services would be handled within the city?
I don't have a great answer on that. I mean, first of all, the county is the PSAP, that's the point of contact, that 911 calls come in. We can't have a second PSAP, the state wouldn't allow that. So they're going to continue to provide the 911 services. And I'm going to guess, if you talk to the county, no, we're going to make sure the citizens of Carroll, like any other resident in Carroll County, would continue to have emergency services. So I don't think anyone would suggest that. I would also say that the county can't provide a level of service to one community in the county and a different level of service to another community in the county. So with that in mind, I would say they would be hard pressed to say, we're going to continue to provide dispatching for police to the city of Manning and Coon Rapids, but we're going to discontinue it for the city of Carroll. So I think that would be difficult to do, because there's equity, and, you know, the law says you have to treat everyone equal from that perspective. So, but it's a discussion item, I don't want to speculate how that would go. And I think negotiation and working with the county on trying to resolve this would be the best route.
I know for the nine years that I've been on, this is a discussion point, seems every year, and I do appreciate the co-op that we have with the county extensively, but every year, it just seems like we bring this back up. And, you know, the two big things that come out to me, if we're 48% of the population but yet paying 68.5% of funding, it's just not. not equitable. And I do think it's something that we need to look seriously at.
Yeah, and I agree, it has to be equitable. It would be a failure, in my opinion, if we have to exit the 2080 agreement. And I really don't like having the, I can't make an intelligent decision between now and the end of the year as to how or where we should go with this. But I do have to believe that we've got to be able to work with the supervisors in some way, shape, or form to find a good equitable solution for the financing, so that the best services possible can be provided for not just Carroll, but for the entire county, and service all of us in a good, fair way. I did speak with a couple of the supervisors today. I'll be trying to reach out to some of the others and trying to work with them to understand their side of the equation as well, so that we can help them to help us. But this is important. And we need equity for the taxpayers of the city of Carroll, but we need to support the county that supports and takes care of all of us as well.
Without going into detail, Clay, can you say how those conversations went? I mean, were, did they seem to be received well?
Absolutely. Yeah, the conversations went very well. And, you know, I hadn't seen this presentation. I know virtually nothing as far as details go as to how the comm center budget works. So from my council seat, I really want to learn a lot more about this before I start setting forth any decisions. But, you know, Mike, you brought up a great point. Nine years we've been circling around this deal. I spoke with Councilman Dirks before the meeting today, and he said, hey, remember a few years ago, I brought this up too, and we need to address it. Now, Carolyn, you've got the longest tenure here. Have you been working with this, the years you've been here as well?
Comes up frequently. And I think it is time we do something. Our budgets are all stretched. And I think the key to all of this is looking at how we define together, city and county, how we define calls for service. Because we are being punished when our, our police department does its job. As Brad said, it's skewed. And I don't even know how many of these towns even have law enforcement. You know, the smaller towns that they do, if they're out just doing their jobs, you know, then is it also skewed? I think we need to evaluate how we define it and recalculate this table. And maybe since it's a county levy, maybe they would consider, you know, looking at the particulars of a levy. And, you know, I think we all need to share the responsibility. Another thing Mike said, you know, we need to have this. We're going to contribute. And to me, it's like having insurance. You pay for it and hope you don't need it. And it's kind of comparable. But it will take work. But I think for us to work together, the work will be worth it. And in the long run, I think it's only fair, the burden is spread out and it's not skewed, as you just indicated, Mike. And I don't know, that, it's going to take work. And I think we have a good board. Is there a sense that people are open to considering that maybe we can initiate?
Yeah, Mike, why don't you, why don't you let me field that one for you, okay? This is contentious. Carolyn, your points, absolutely.
I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody about it.
You're spot on, though. Our budget's tight, the county's budget's tight, the comm center's budget is tight. And Carolyn, I think you're right. I think we've all got to pull together, us here at the council, the county, we've got to pull together and try to find a way through this and do it together. This is all of our homes. We owe it to the people of Carroll proper, as well as the county of Carroll, to get out there and work through that solution, no matter how challenging it may be. But I really believe that if this body and the county body work together, we can reach a resolution. But this is going to be a testy deal. How was that, Mike? Is that okay?
I think that's a great, a great way of saying that. And what I would add is, I think there, there's challenges. And, you know, we are a community that, you know, we value the services we get that are done very efficiently at a low cost. And if, and I think there's a concern with the county that obviously if they take a bigger portion of the whole thing, well, that's shifting the burden. But I think from our perspective, we're really saying, what's the right equitable burden that the Carroll taxpayer, the city of Carroll taxpayers should be paying? And this isn't trying to add more to the city budget or whatnot. It's just a realization that there is going to be an end where the 28, or the A-10 levy, the general fund levy cannot sustain without impacting other services. You know, you just keep the A-10 levy flat, that doesn't generate new dollars unless property tax values go up. And this year, we're not looking at, I don't know if we've gotten any numbers yet, Laura.
We just got valuations late this afternoon.
Okay. And you don't, you've never, you've not studied those, I'm assuming. Okay. You know, we were looking at it really high level. And I think Laura and I were really, before we got the valuations, we're not anticipating, you know, more than a half percent increase. Well, when you're looking at large increases that are more than just a half percent increase, well, that just can't be sustained by the A-10 levy anymore. Because, you know, we've maxed that out. We certainly can move other things around, but it becomes, it gets more, more problematic. And so this isn't about trying to add more to the city budget just so we can shift it to the county. It's just, it's just reality we live in, within our budget.
Well, another thing, I mean, it all starts with defining the calls for service. And if these are skewed or misrepresenting the situation, I don't know, do they, is there a need? Or, I don't know, I guess the county has to decide. Then would that impact their thoughts regarding a need for another staff person? I don't know. I mean, this is all new to me, but I think we all need to come to an agreement on what a call for service is and start from there.
And we can ask, we can request that for a breakdown of what the different types are. I know it's a report that they can run fairly easily.
Oh, good, yeah.
So we'll request that. I guess, is there other information that the council would like that we can, we can either get ourselves or request that would help you guys kind of formulate where, where the council wants to head on this?
And it would be interesting to see the breakdown for each of these towns.
I believe they can do that.
They, so we're comparing apples to apples.
So there are towns in the county that pay nothing for this, other than their county.
So the only two funders of the comm center are 50% the city of Carroll, 50% Carroll County. So.
Any other town, even one that has police services?
So for example, the two other communities that have police services are the city of Manning and the city of Coon Rapids. They pay nothing towards the comm center, but they still have dispatching and 911 services through the city-county communication center.
And of the 10 peer counties besides our, well, let's go to 11, counting ourselves, we are paying the highest amount of the 11.
Correct. So of those 11, of the 10 peers plus us, we contacted the largest jurisdiction in each of those counties. And we pay the most of all the largest cities in those comparable counties.
See, to me, that says something. That speaks volumes as to how much we're contributing now and why we deserve a break at this time.
And, I mean, let me pull it back up and we can, we can kind of, let's go through each one of them. Because I do, I think you have a very, very legitimate point. So you have this column that's city annual costs. Grinnell pays zero, you know, and they're a town of 9,200. Macokona, 5990, you know, they pay $204,540 towards it. Now, that's a city operated system, so they're a little bit of an.
Did you check to see if they get reimbursed from the county?
50% of the total cost by the county. And three smaller towns that have police departments contribute 16% towards it. So the total cost is $480,40.
Mike, real quick before you go on, and how did we come up with this list? Because this is different than usually what we see in the budget.
That were identified by the county. So we just use their peer list.
Okay, thank you.
Plus, it was, it was fewer. Because if you remember, our comparable, we have 17, I believe. So it was an easier list to go through. And some of these, like Grinnell, Mount Pleasant, Storm Lake, Decorah, Oskaloosa would also be our peers that we normally benchmark against. Mount Pleasant, population 8,600, they pay $10,000 a year. O'Line, again, they operate their own 911 system in addition to Fayette County. The city of Carroll, this current fiscal year, we're contributing 234,000 a year. Next fiscal year proposed right now is 273,653. Fiscal year 21 was 28,000. Doing some equipment upgrades. And so they're, they believe it'll go up to 38,000. Pays $170,000. Formula of Population and Call Service. So they use. There. Decorah, 2080 Emergency Management System. Fiscal year 2000, I don't know what fiscal year this, but they reported, so I'm guessing.
Current fiscal year?
$139,000. And they just had a change where it was the city of Decorah that ran that system. Just changed the lie one to a county-wide system, and that's what they're. Washington, population 7,266, they don't contribute anything towards the system. And Oskaloosa, population 11,463, they don't contribute anything towards it. So you can see, I think if there's anything that this illustrates is, it almost even looks like, it doesn't matter if you're small or big. There's just a variety of ways and what city's contributing towards their emergency communication center budget. There's just one way that they're doing it. And certainly, even as I own the fire service formula, that's just one way we can look at. I think there's probably a lot of other ways we can look at it, too.
Is there a range for a levy, for the amount of the levy, Mike?
For each of these jurisdictions?
For, just whatever state code sets for some, maybe we need, I don't know.
I don't know the answer.
It would be good to do our homework and look at all angles.
Yeah. And we can easily, it takes us about two minutes to pull the levies for each of the counties, each of the cities. That'd be really easy to do.
Yeah, I just wonder if they have, what their levy rate is in where the four towns that have the levy. Or counties, pardon me, not towns, counties.
Now, Mike, this report that you've shown us tonight, this information, I should say, you got some of this, sorry, have my mic off. There we go. You had some of this information that you presented tonight from the presentation by the comm group? And then you filled in some of the other through your own research?
So this table that's up right here was stuff that myself and other city staff worked to put together. The first charts that I showed, and I'll pull it up here, the number of employees and the call volumes, that all came from Jason Hoffman with Carroll County. And I believe he got it from one of the state boards that they work with, all the 911 dispatching works with.
I guess my point is that I would like to have a copy of that to review.
Yeah.
And I'd also like to have you forward that along to Jason and anyone else who might benefit from seeing it on the, on the commission there.
All the information I put together was shared with the other members of the communication board. So they have all of that already by email.
Fantastic. How about the supervisors?
Well, they, there's two supervisors on the board. Certainly, I could have, I could send it out to the full board supervisors.
If you would, I would appreciate that, just so that they have the same information that we have as we move forward.
We've not had any feedback from them as to why they feel we should continue at the status quo. I mean, during these meetings, are they saying, what are they, they're saying, why would you not? Or what, how are they justifying this?
I think they totally justify it just on, based on the number of calls to service. But I think that's always been a contentious point, at least from the city's perspective. As for, you know, I think like any board that's responsible for budgets, I mean, your first hope is to try to limit any tax impact to your taxpayers. And I believe that's probably part of their, their thought, train of thought. I mean, the 50-50 split is something that's been in place, you know, for a very long time. I mean, it was in, really, the first 2080 is my understanding. And I think when you look back that further and just look at how it's changed, it's more than just a non-emergency general number, it's 911 now, and the wireless has changed, and you know, you've added other entities to the comm center. You know, when this was first set up, it wasn't even fire department dispatching. Well, that's all done now through one central point. It just has changed dramatically. But that funding mechanism has really never been looked into at any great detail. I think that's the real question of, is it, is it still equitable to the taxpayers of the city of Carroll? And I think that's the discussion I think the council's had, that I've heard over the years of, it isn't. And I think as, as the cost of the comm center goes up, it's just a point that I think we really need to look at, where do we want to head?
You need anything else from us right now?
I don't. Certainly, if you guys have other items that you would like us to explore, we're more than happy to have those discussions. I know our next board meeting is the 30th. And so I think.
Of December?
Of December. So the communications board is having a meeting on the 30th. And certainly, depending on the outcome, there'll probably be more to come forth to the city. But it's a, it is, it's, as, as we put together the fiscal year 2020 budget, or 2022 budget, 2020 is over. It is trying. It's a trying budget this year. And it's probably more so than ever. And this is, this is not the sole reason, but it's just one of the many reasons that it gets more difficult in some of these areas that are just every year an escalator. I think we really need to step back and ask, is that where we want to continue going? I think we have to look at those things more so. And this is one of those things that has come forth. That's my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a very Merry Christmas.
Mike, could you share these with us, the county's information?
I'll forward this after the team, Carolyn.
Oh, thank you very much.
Very interesting. Thank you. All right, we'll be looking for most to adjourn. Salute. Salute.
Second.
We'll have a vote. Sorry about that, I'm not used to that.
Cots?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Schlesner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
We are adjourned.[1780.46]